Testing. First, Joshua, do you have the? Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 21st. I'd like to welcome everyone to our regular board meeting. Excuse me. Present in the boardroom, we have members Wilson, Lessons, Donley, Jacobs, Higgins, Bellamy, and Bellamy. Online, we have a member Holloman. Also with us in the boardroom is Dr. Bryant, our superintendent, and our executive secretary, Ms. Amanda Foster. And last but definitely not least is our student rep, Joshua Pack. And with that, Joshua, if you will lead the pledge and then followed by the land acknowledgement.
A pledge we would just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion and is with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you very much. Let the record show that we began the meeting at 6:03. I don't think I stated that during the call to order. So I would like to again welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of this board. We would like to thank our students, our parents, our staff, school business partners, the entire community for all that you do to invest in our district with your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. With that, that brings us to item A3, the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second? Moved in second to approve the agenda as written or as presented? Seeking unanimous consent, is there any objection to the motion to accept the agenda as presented? Hearing none, the agenda is except approved as presented. That brings us to item B. We only have one report and that's our student report today. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Pack.
Thank you. Unfortunately, our last November student advisory board meeting was canceled in light of recent snowfall. So like schools canceled, so was our meeting. And a lot of the things that are planned for that meeting will be pushed into our December meeting, including advisors, like student government advisors talking and meeting and communicating. And while there was school canceled, we did attend the ASB Youth Leadership Institute along with some school board members here. And Incroche was proudly represented by five delegates from South Blairus and I believe East. But the general consensus in the conference was that students all across Alaska need funding, which is always a large prominent issue. Teacher relationships with students and longstanding connections is what improve student outcomes. And we also had a lot of great networking and met with tribal councils and had conversations on rather political issues I think that adults are also debating and considering these days. So I think it was a wonderful conference and I thank you, Madam President, for giving us this opportunity and the rest of the school board.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Mr. Pack, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Pack or comments? As he said, we did have five amazing students that joined us for the conference. And the thing I liked about it is that the youths were included. We began today together as a group, so that's board members from all over the state with students from all over the state. During lunch, on some lunches, some days for lunch, we had lunch together. They were, of course, located in the chart, was it the chart room on top of the Hilton? We were on the bottom. But we could go back and forth to engage with the students. And I don't have it with me. I thought I bought a summary of the work that the students did. And I think that would be very helpful to this board and any other board as we continue to advocate with our legislators. Because out of the mouth of babes came a lot of really good information as to what are their issues, not ours. What do they need, not what we're telling them to that they need, but what they feel that they need. And so I think having that voice is very, very important. So I will pull that up and make sure the board gets a copy, the board and the administration gets a copy of that. So thank you very much. And now we're ready for our monitoring conversation and my computer died. Give me one minute. So at our last meeting, we received the report, the technical report. And tonight is our conversation. And we've already apologized for sending our questions late, but we also expect, we also expect to have a very good conversation. So give me one little minute so that I can go through all of the components. Sorry about that. So tonight, our discussion is on goal, is on our, we will continue to look at our graduation rates. And that is part of our life, college, and career readiness goal. That goal reads, beginning with the freshman class in 20, in September 2020, the percentage of high school students graduating life-ready as well as college and or career-ready will increase from a baseline to be determined in the spring. And of course, as you all know, we are still waiting on those scores, so we cannot, we don't have the target that score yet. But whatever that score is, our intent is to, by 20, by 20, to increase to 90% by the spring of 2026. Also interim goal number, we also indicator, not interim, indicator, which is the four-year, we're looking at specifically at the four-year graduation rate. Graduation from high school is a strong indicator of success in life as well as in college and or career. So I want to confirm that all four components of the monitoring report are present. That first, the first component of the report that is that it clearly shows what is being monitored in that its focus is specific to graduation rates. The report shows data for the three previous years, three previous reporting periods, the current reporting period and the target reporting period. The report shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance. And the report, excuse me, shows supporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables that are provided. So with all those, with all four components present, we're ready to begin our progress monitoring conversation. So for the purpose of understanding the current reality of our students as compared to this goal, let's begin with any questions, and I know we struggle with this, but let's try to start with questions beginning with the who, the what, the why. And once the board fully understands our current reality, then we will move on to the how. And in that category of questions, the superintendent can share and staff can share with us what the plans are in response to the data. So with this conversation logic model in mind, the floor is now open for the board to engage in inquiry regarding our CCL goal number one, specifically graduation rate. So with that, who has the first question? I think what, and I guess I can, I think I'll kick off simply because it might be useful to explain how we get the graduation, just clarify how we get the graduation rate. So Dr. Bryant, whenever, whenever you're ready. I mean, I know, I know that it's a fraction, but I don't know that the community understands that. Thank you.
Great question, Madam President. And we've just turned to slide three and I'll let our teammates dive into that slide.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity, members of the board. So graduation rate is a fraction, percentage of students who earn a diploma. They are identified as part of a cohort which is determined or defined freshman year. So a district calculates the number of freshmen that begin a certain year. That's the cohort. You follow them through the four years. The percentage of students who graduate from that cohort is your graduation rate. Board member Bellamy, I think you posed the question about students who leave the district and students who enter. So I'd like to address that at this time.
You know, if they come in as ninth graders.
Yep.
Are we tracking them till they get to 12?
We track, we track them as a cohort to 12th grade. Any student who leaves the cohort regardless of reason, once we've determined that they are enrolled in another district, they're no longer part of the cohort. They become part of another district's cohort. Similarly, when we accept a student into ASD, upon arrival, we determine when, what, what year they were a freshman and they are assigned to that cohort. So students leave the cohort, students enter the cohort. Upon completion of the senior year, that information is reviewed by the state. We have a certain period to audit and correct and make adjustments that are ultimately approved. And then they send us the final state sanctioned graduation rate, which you guys see before you.
So what, what roughly, and this was not one of my questions, but that I sent in. What percentage of ninth graders start with us and graduate? They start as ninth graders, they graduate as 12th graders successfully. Do we know that number? And that could be a board connected thing if you need it to be.
Yeah. Yeah, member Billy, I think it's a great question. I think it would be great if we could get you an exact number through Board Connect. But I will say just from my history in the district that I believe it's a large number of our students that are a part of that cohort of graduation and stay with us. So it's a majority of our students, but it's not all of them.
And my, my last question, so I think I know the answer to it, but it was asked at a, one of my community council meetings. When the students who graduate, I mean, the numbers that we capture in the fraction, that includes all of our ninth graders, no matter what school they attend, right? It's not just a comprehensive age.
Yeah, that is correct.
That's correct.
I got that answer right. All right. Who has the next question? Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I was curious, when we look at the four-year breakdown by school type, we saw the charter had the biggest year-over-year drop in four-year graduation rate. I was curious what we know about that and if it's, we think it's a function of it just being a relatively small group or if there's something else behind it. Thank you.
Sure. So through the president, remember Jacobs, so charter schools do set their own kind of goals and guidelines as a part of their charter. And so a lot of times what we see in particularly some of our specialized programs like charters is students who maybe need to find a different setting too. So sometimes students do end up in programs behind in graduation requirements as they're moving through. So I would, I would say that that explains some of it for sure in terms of a drop in graduation rate is that students may start at one comprehensive high school and move to a charter or a specialized program within our alternative schools as well. And so you do see students who sometimes in those settings have to do a little bit more catch up than a traditional student in a comprehensive high school.
Thank you. Do you have your member Higgins?
Thank you. And I appreciate the comment about the calculation here. I'm interested because I remember back in, back in 2008 with low 60s graduation rate, one of the contributing factors there was just not tracking kids. They'd walk out, people weren't running after them, they weren't finding out where they were going. And so some of that was improvement in graduation rate, some of it was improvement in tracking. Now with the pandemic and with people out and the other issues where they've dropped out, you know, they started in ninth grade and they're, they're going someplace, but they just haven't tracked it very well. How much, how serious is that an issue that's going to give us inaccurate or let's say not complete information on graduation rates at this point? Because we've got a lot of kids, we don't know where they went, we don't know what's going on. So that seems like that's going to be an issue this year and for the next couple of years. Is that pretty accurate? Is that where we're at?
Yeah, I think that we're tracking students very intentionally. A student is maintained on the graduation cohort unless we know they're enrolled elsewhere. So school registrars follow the student to try to determine where they are, where they're enrolled. If they can't find the answer, it's kicked up to our level and we'll work on it. I think it's very few students that we actually don't know where they've landed after they leave ASD.
That's good, good.
Yeah. And Madam President, if you mind, if I add to that, that's something that I was a principal at the time, member Higgins, when some of that work began in 2008 and into the 2010s and all of, all of that time. And, and it was, it was a different tracking system then. I think we've cleaned up a lot of that housekeeping for sure. And part of the process that we use at the beginning of each school year is as student, as those preliminary grad rates come in, there's an internal process for us to double check with our registrars who are really tracking our principals at high schools that are really tracking. So it's a very in-depth process to make sure that we have the accurate data. As Eric mentioned, there are a few kids that we just can't track down whether they've left the state and we don't have 4D contact information, but it's a very small number at this point. So I just wanted to assure you that it's a pretty detailed process.
Thank you. Member Lessons.
I find beginning with who, what, when, where, why very limiting, so I'm going to ignore that. I guess I wanted to begin by thinking back to one of the graduation ceremonies that I attended. And four members shake students' hands at the end of the year. It's a wonderful moment. And the principal I was with shared, sort of pointed to a student and said, I talked that student down from dropping out three weeks ago. So I just, I want to put that out there to say that there are people doing hard work and advocating for students every day. And all of these numbers come down to real kids and their relationships with their educators. You know, that said, when we look at the data, right? It's really dismaying to see that our Alaska Native graduation rate is as low as it is. It's really dismaying. Thank you to the team for adding some data on what I perceive as a profound gender gap between our male and our female graduates. It is, it's real and it's sizable when you disaggregate it by student subgroup. And I think that there is room for improvement. And I would love to get to the, to the whys. But, but really, when I think about it, it comes down to resources. And I think I just want to hammer this home again and again, because we can't, graduation rate is, is the last thing out the door. But we can't work on graduation rates if our students don't have the resources in elementary school to prepare them for middle school. And if they don't have the resources in middle school to prepare them for high school so that they're ready to tackle the coursework and the opportunities we want them to. So I really, the system is in trouble. And these numbers, I think, if the state doesn't turn around its funding, these numbers aren't going to get any better because students are going to lose. That said, I guess I'm hoping that maybe you guys might have some insights. I'm going to push more on this gender gap. What are some issues that ASD may have discussed or may be aware about that, that may explain some of the gender gap that we're seeing here and on the data dashboard going back a number of years?
Yeah, well, a quick comment, member Lessons. Thank you for your question and thank you for drawing attention to issues of disproportionality as they impact graduation rates. It's important. And in the case of Alaska Natives, it's something that we're spending a lot of time looking at, studying. And I think have some real plans in place to make a difference. We also appreciate your call for more funding and resources. That aside, I think there are things that we are doing and can do to improve those rates. In terms of gender, I think the most important initiative before us is embracing, embracing the CCL initiative, specifically CTE education, which lends itself to hands-on, kinesthetic, work-ready education, which will likely, the research shows, make a, make an important difference in addressing the gender gap pertaining to graduation rates. And I'll defer to my colleague, Dr. Johnson, to say more about CTE as it, as it will impact gender.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. I would agree with everything that Eric said. I will also just kind of remind the board when we've looked at metrics about why we are looking towards a college career life ready initiative, in particular, looking at career academies. One of the big indicators that we've looked at internally is how much better our students perform in terms of graduation rate when they have completed a CTE concentrator. And if you remember, that's two courses within CTE to, as they work through their high school career. So as students are engaged in that, potentially looking at different types of learning modalities and styles that are present in the classroom, like project-based learning is a huge part of that, which, as Eric indicated, is more kinesthetic and, and would lean itself to engaging male students at a, at a greater rate. But it's also a great way for all kids to learn. It's not just for male students. And so if you combine that with the success indicators that we've seen through our CTE concentrator programs, kind of like the, the larger picture of just being college career life ready, I think the, the path that we're on is, is a good solution. And then if we can back our resources around that, we're going to start to see that needle move. I would also add that attendance tends to link itself to graduation rates as well indirectly. And missing instruction definitely, you know, creates learning gaps for students. And if we have a system where students are seeing the relevance of their education in relationship to the job market after high school, that's going to also lead our, our, our numbers to an upward trend if we're looking at all those factors.
So I guess I'll ask the next question. On page four, I know, I know I pack it changed a little bit. I know, aside from the impact of COVID, what are the factors that schools attribute the continuing drop in graduation to? And could this be, could the continuing drop have anything to do with the steady drop or change in the decrease, the decreasing size of each cohort? So I think, but, but I think I heard you say earlier that you adjust that fraction as kids, it's adjusted. So it doesn't have anything to do with cohort. But what are schools saying are the, are the issues? What, what do they see as issues as to why that number has not? You know, I remember a few years ago, we had the 90% by 2020. And so here we are in 2023 and we're still trying to get that 90%. So what are the factors? You just said one, which is attendance. And I don't know how to make that any more resounding and important than, than it, than it is to us. We know. But then I guess how do we let parents and kids know how crucial that is, you know, to the, to their outcomes?
So if I may, yeah, board member Bellamy, great question. Attendance is certainly one of the important factors. Can we view attendance and declining attendance since COVID? Can we view it outside of the lens of COVID? I'm not sure.
I don't know.
I think it's directly related. But it's really important that we look at attendance also through the lens of our demographic groups. Back to Native Alaskans who, who by demographic group have the lowest graduation rate. Their attendance is also the lowest in the district. That's a really important fact to correlate as we look at graduation rates. Another important factor specific to ASD is the, the number of schools that our students attend. There's a very high rate of mobility. And I did some research on that the last couple of days and about 30% of students in ASD attend five schools or more over the course of their tenure, K through 12. Right? And typically we'd see three schools in elementary, a middle and a high school, maybe four if there's a change in there. But one third of our students attend five schools or more. I went further and looked at those students who attend seven schools or more, which is a very, very high number. District average is 8%. So that's many, many students attending multiple schools. And that surely is a factor impacting graduation rates.
I would add that when you look at those transitions for students, there, there tends to be a socioeconomic factor as well. So that is also impacting the, the moves that families are making because there, many of them are making those moves based on economics or needing to move housing as a result of the economics.
So, so is the thought that, is it possible that as they, because that is alarming. I mean, really, I mean, five different schools in a nine, 10, a four-year span. I mean, for like for high school, right?
No, 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 that's K through 12.
Right, K through 12. So they start with elementary, they go to the middle school, those are probably, are those stable? Or is it, it can be any, anywhere on the?
We'd have to go deeper, but that just gives you a snapshot. of mobility within the district. Yeah, a lot of students moving from one school to another, having to reset, restart, build connections. We all appreciate how important relationships are, both among peers and with adults in the building. Every time you move, you have to recreate those. It really is the foundation for a successful educational experience.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, I guess a follow-up conversation, uh, follow-up question. Um, on, on the points we were just discussing with the students attending multiple schools, I, I suspected, and I don't know if we have firm data or just a, a strong educated guess, that the, a higher number of schools attended has a strong overlap with um, being socio-economically disadvantaged. I'm curious if we as a district, and maybe this is a question for administration, maybe it's a question for the board, should be advocating for kind of extended social policy items like universal free lunch and affordable housing. Um, and kind of had an, an expanded umbrella of advocacy that we need to consider as a group because it does clearly have an impact on our students. So we're just, maybe this is another question. It's not a fair one to ask anyway, so um, I'll think on it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes, Josh.
So if we're under the notion that graduation rates are like a sign that there are probably good academics behind the students who are graduating diplomas, would you say there's any tracking done? Or have there been any tracking done following middle schoolers and their academics? Probably like testing scores or their grades and tracking them to see if high schools are actually mitigating those? Projected success or is making it worse? I'm wondering if there's anything behind that.
I love that kid.
Board Member Pack. Great question. Yeah, no, I appreciate it. You're thinking strategically about education. You know, to the degree to which we're paying attention to those points of transition, students moving from elementary to middle and middle to high school, right? Are there metrics that can predict success? Right? And there are. There's a lot of research uh, that shows that um, high attendance and we keep pointing to ninety percent attendance are better. And in middle school, most research says three point oh. If you have a three point oh GPA, attendance at ninety percent, those factors together will lead to a successful four years in high school. Uh, we also know that ninth grade is especially important to high school success and beyond. And um, it's, it's really been my mantra since taking this position that uh, our focus in high school and really eighth to ninth, but our focus needs to be on s- supporting success in every way in the ninth grade. And if we can do this work, uh, focus our resources there, I think that we'll see an increase in graduation rates uh, in time. Of course, that takes time because you have to wait for the cohort to move along. But um, it begins in, in, well, elementary school for sure. But um, making sure that our middle schools are paying attention to those metrics and building strong bridges to high school.
And I would just add too, I think um, when, when we look at the board goals around reading, math and CCL, they're all research-based goals. And I think the board has done a really nice job strategically thinking about the whole child from preschool all the way through twelfth grade and what that progression looks like. Eric talked about the transition of middle to high school, but we also know that that reading and that foundational work at elementary is extremely important as an indicator for graduation too. There's research that says if students aren't reading by third grade, they're not as likely to graduate from high school. And so I think the strategic plan that's in place for us to look at those important things is really leading us down the right path. And, and figuring out the resources and how to ta- attack that as a, as a educator group so that we see the best results for kids is important.
I, I'm just curious. Another question I didn't, that's the thing, guys, these questions just come up the more we talk, right? Some of the work that the um, CCL group is working on really defines, identifies a graduate. And I don't know if there's an answer there. That hasn't come before us yet, but um, I, I, it would be, I, I'm curious to know what does, what does a graduate look like from the Anchorage School District? And, and, and how, and having that particular conversation. So we'll have you come back when you, I know you guys are, are, you have a strategy.
We, we have a draft ready to, ready to share.
Cool, great. So it's not, you know, it's Alaska, our Alaska Native students are doing the absolute, um, I, I mean, I'm really concerned, followed by our African-American or Black students. They're not very large cohort groups, which makes me even more concerned because it's not very many of them. But the impact, you know, uh, for Black students, it's sixty-nine point seven percent. Alaska Native students is fifty-five percent. And then everybody else is at least over seventy, except for those two groups. And I'm just wondering, in, why? I, I know attendance. I get it. It's attendance. I know it's socioeconomic. And, and I know it's a struggle. So I don't know. I, I, I just, I, I wanna know why, but I, I, I know part of the answer. Uh, and I know it's not, we can't just limit it to just one answer. It, it's a complex issue. But, so I guess my question is, do we have any idea what happens to stu-, these students in our schools? I mean, if they're not there, that's on them and their families. But once they're there, how do we keep them there? And I think that's what you're saying, uh, Dr. Johnson. Is that that's, the, the, the academies are gonna have a different impact, particularly on these groups. At least that's where, that's part of my excitement.
Yes.
Mine, but, but anyway, I'm just, so they had, so I don't know. If, if there's any reflections or thoughts? Those two groups are just, and I don't think it's the resources. I, I think, it must be, I, I don't know what it is. Is it climate? Is it? I don't know what it is.
Well, Eric and I um, have talked quite a bit about those particular groups that you, that you mentioned, Black students and Alaska Native American Indian students over the last couple of days. Just really being prepared for your questions and, and taking a look at, at our, our data. The story that this report doesn't show you is our five-year graduation report. And the good news in our five-year graduation report is that we graduate a whole lot more students in our district in five years. And, and not this year, but in previous years when I've been here talking about graduation rates. We've, I, I like to celebrate that as a district. I think that should be a pride point for the district. While we want students to graduate absolutely in four years, that should be the goal and continue to be the goal. There are students and factors, life happens, right? And we need to meet kids where they're at. And as a district, I do think we do a very good job of, of sticking with kids and getting them across that stage, whether it's in four years, five years. And some of our students we stick with for even six years before um, we can get them graduated. And I think that's a huge accomplishment for us as a district. So you, particularly with our Black students, you see a huge jump in graduation rates in our five-year rate. So I know you have the particular numbers.
But does that count in, in our overall?
It doesn't count. It does not. Not for the state reporting system, but um, it does in life for kids. So I think it should be a pride point still.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Board.
Makes me feel a little better.
If I may, because I, I think the numbers here are really important. Black students, for example, the cohort graduation rate, four years, is sixty-nine percent. It jumps to eighty-eight percent in five.
In five years.
Yeah. So you're, the question you posed, which is a great one, what happens to students after four years? Well, many of them are sticking with ASD and ASD with them. Native Alaskan students, four-year graduation rate, fifty-two percent. It jumps to sixty-nine percent in five years. And my contention is that the vast majority of our students, district-wide, it's eighty-seven percent, graduate in five years. They're sticking with it. It's taking them longer. So our job is to figure out how to intervene earlier. My contention is ninth grade is the year. To identify those students who have fallen off track, make sure that they have the resources and the programs in place to get them caught back up. So they don't need the fifth year.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Member Wilson.
That's actually very interesting information for me. Is there any way to incorporate an extra page or some, something into the report so that we can start tracking those five-year graduation rates and who's graduating? And, and at least so we can start tracking that information because um, I think that's, that's a fantastic thing to know that our students are graduating.
Yeah, Board Member Wilson, yeah, I, I will gladly prepare that for the board and submit it for your review. I think it's a really important part of the story that isn't told in the four-year.
Yeah, because kids learn at different rates. They, they learn in different ways. And so I, that's, that's really important information, I think.
And I think it's information that the board needs to remember uh, and embrace. Because, I mean, I do feel a little better. But uh, because it does take kids, some kids, longer. And, or for whatever reason, whether it's attendance or they're working, they're working and going to school. I mean, there's all kinds of scenarios out there.
For sure.
Uh, but as long as we're not losing them um, and they're, and, and at some point, they, they, they do manage to graduate. So if a kid went to, what is that place? To get a GED, do we track that at all? Or once they, once they leave, do we just?
We do track students that go to GD programs. Um, unfortunately, GDs count as a dropout for us.
Oh, it does?
It does. Um, and it, it doesn't mean it's not a worthy cause.
Is that like a state thing?
Yeah, it's, that's part of the state reporting system for our four-year graduation rate. So when students choose to go the GED route, they're considered a dropout. They're taken out of the graduation cohort. So while students may make a great choice to continue their education in an alternative fashion so that they can, there's a lot of reasons why students choose that pathway. That, that unfortunately hurts us in our data.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Member Higgins, and then we'll come back to Member Lessons.
Just a few points. One is I attended the NSBA, National School Board Association Conference, and they had a study being done of effective school boards. And I thought it was interesting. And uh, one of the things they pointed out within the schools they had, the schools they did, and they, no real small schools, but not the top, uh, top-sized schools out there. But they showed school districts where Blacks and Alaska and American Indians were at the top of the graduation rates and academically doing great. So it, it, it just labeling anything like this, but their success was really interesting. And it was a pretty good-sized school district. I don't know what they're doing different, but it'd be good for us to look at them and say, what are you, what are you doing that's success? When it comes to the graduation rates, when I got on two thousand eight, we had to have graduation, we had to test it at that point too, to get a diploma. And everybody kept track of different ways all over the country with different ways of determining graduation rates, the four, the five, all over the place. And then we standardized it. So while I appreciate the comparison of what the five years is, we'd have to look for other districts and say, what are they doing as well in five years? Because we're trying to track it in four. And, and that's the only other thing. And then the issue about GED, I appreciate that too. But right now, as I understand it, within the military, you can't get in the military with a GED. That, you gotta have a diploma. There's a lot of things out there that are connected with the success and the, and they anticipate. Then they view the probability of success for these individuals that they have a diploma versus GED is quite high. So uh, studies with that, I, I appreciate that because it's better than not doing it and it's, it's good. But to me, it's not a substitute at all. I hesitate to do that when you, I think the Coast Guard was taking some with GED, but nobody else. Simply because of the, the proven success rates, they wouldn't do it. So we've gotta push with the graduation. It's critical. Thanks.
And I was actually trying to remember nine-star. They, they don't give a GED, right? They give a, they help kids graduate.
They do both.
They do both. Okay, okay. Member Lessons?
Um, yeah, thank you. So at last week, two weekends ago, the AASB meeting, this, the question of GEDs came up and it was just in casual conversation. But I would be interested in hearing if the administration would support advocacy for not requiring students to have to drop out to get their GED.
I think I would support it a, as a part of not harming us in our dropout rates. That would be helpful. Um, because they're not truly a dropout in my mind as an educator. They're just pursuing an alternate way of their education. So that, that's something that I would see as valuable to us as a school district to really accurately report the data.
Okay, that's helpful to know.
But the way it is now, they are, the state, if they drop out of high school and go to a, then they're, they can't do both right now. Is that right?
My understanding is that you have to drop out before you can pursue your GED. If you're sixteen and you decide that you're done, you have to drop out and then get your GED, which may be fine for the students' life choices, but hurts ASD's reporting data.
Correct.
So I think it's a question that we might wanna put in our pocket for future conversations with legislators about whether that's a reasonable change to pursue at the state level. I, we were talking about mobility just a little bit ago and I thought, I knew what I've read about this. Military students have very high rates of mobility over their lives. There was a great article in the New York Times in the middle of October about the Department of Defense schools that fund their students to the tune of like twenty-five thousand dollars a year and actually have really impressive results. It seems to me that at some level, adequate funding compensates for mobility or may compensate for mobility. And twenty-five thousand dollars a student is a heck of a lot more than we're getting for ASD as a district. So I just wanted to say that. Um, great piece of reporting in the middle of October.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Wilson.
I'm, I'm curious, is there data and, and maybe online that I could look on to see what the graduation rates are per each of our high schools and alternative schools? I just, oh, did I miss that?
Oh, the, the, per school? I think we gave it.
I'm just wondering how.
We have a collective, uh, you wanna break out the comprehensive and alternative and charters?
Well, no, I'm, well, I'm like east versus west versus service versus south. I'm just wondering what, how equity plays into, into the whole um, graduation rates because I would imagine.
Per school.
Okay, I missed it.
Yeah, we definitely have that.
Yeah, right now, we just have it all grouped together. We have, we have the comprehensive, the alternative and the charter. So is it, is it possible to break that out?
Absolutely.
Maybe for Board Connect.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Right, Member Jacobs, and then Member Dunle.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to touch on um, Member Lessons' comment about uh, the article on military schools, which was neat and insightful. I wanna say that those schools also had universal free lunch and um, a host of other potential benefits. And what I suspect is um, a much lower rate of economically disadvantaged students than we see. I think our, our majority of our students, um, well, it's, it's a significant number. I think it's maybe north of forty percent. Very economically disadvantaged and I suspect parental engagement is also significantly higher. So that's, we're working with a different population. And I think that's, we had a great training earlier this year, uh, or maybe it was the end of last year, with the First Alaskans Institute. And it really drove home the point that um, our graduation rate for, specifically for Alaska Native American Indian youth, it doesn't represent the abilities of the students we have in the district. I think it, it really highlights the inequity in the system that we have in place, I guess. And so I'm gonna transition to how, in case we haven't already done that officially. How, how are we choosing to incorporate that reality as a district and acknowledging that that graduation rate should be higher if we were to incorporate things like, you know, subsistence calendars and, and other cultural differences and recognizing the inherent inequity in our current K-12 system. Thank you.
So through the President to Member Jacobs, I can start and maybe Eric can add on. One of the things that, um, for the College Career Life Ready team that has been really important is just that, looking specifically at our Alaska Native American Indian students. We've done a concerted effort to work with Helena Batman and Indigenous education and then also doing a lot of outreach to our different native corporations for involvement in the planning around our career academies to recognize that there needs to be um, cultural relevance for those students um, in the academy model. And so that has been a, a very specific focus, um, along with others as we're planning and in terms of our outreach to our community. And um, just before the, the snow week we had last week, we presented to the Siri Board as an example. We also have been to the We also have been to the South Central Foundation, and we've also worked with Bristol Bay. So we're doing lots of outreach to cultural groups beyond Alaska Native students as well, because we are such a diverse community, we want to build in that cultural responsiveness to the model that we're building. If we're going to really do structural change that impacts kids for the positive, we want that to be a part of the plan. So, so that's one of the things that, that I can say we're doing very, very, like specifically as we build, build this model.
Yeah, member Jacobs, thanks for the question. A couple of things I would add. We've done, I think, really tremendous work this year in developing a data platform called Unified Insights, which allows us to identify students in real time. We're not waiting for quarter data or semester data, but it's day-to-day update data, which allows us to track students' attendance, GPA, number of Fs in the gradebook, any data point you would want. And we're training school-based teams, administrators, counselors, teachers now have access, to use the tool readily so that we know when students are falling off track. I think this is really important in relation to the work that Kirsten is talking about as we build capacity with our community partners, improve our understanding for cultural relevance, that we're also looking at performance data so that we can respond in real time in the school setting. So in my work with the high schools, I want to make sure we have teams that are reviewing this data, that are identifying students who fall behind. If they happen to be a student who's Native Alaskan, right, we're going to take that into account. Any other student, we're going to take that into account. But, you know, in addition to being culturally literate with the students we serve, we also need to know in real time the students who are falling behind and how best to serve them. So it's a combination of those two things. Last, I would point out that Tony Riley, who's the head of our Office of Equity and Community Outreach, has developed a equity framework that we're using with the implementation of all things CCL. I'm leading the freshman academy tactic team right now. That whole process has used the equity framework in all decision-making we've done, which is taking into account different student groups, different student needs, making sure that the system is built to serve the diverse students that, that are ASD.
Thank you. Member Dunley?
So you've had the 90% goal for quite a few years, I think at least seven years. And we haven't made any progress up to this point in time. We started at about 80% and we're 81% this last year. So obviously, we need to do something different. And I'm encouraged because I've been trying to take notes of what you're proposing to do differently, and they sound like good ideas to me. We've got the REEDS Act out there that's starting from the beginning, and it's going to take time to work its way through the system. I hear vocational and the academies, which I'm very, very, feel very strongly that they've proven successful in other school districts in the number 48. So I think that's great. Now, are you wanting to focus on ninth grade? And I'm interested in what kind of strategies you're utilizing for focusing on ninth grade. Additionally, you increased outreach to cultural groups, and this may be related to the ninth grade focus, individual student data tracking and response teams to that. Are there any other additional specific strategies that you're going to use that are different than past seven years that haven't had, we haven't had any real progress?
Yeah, that's a good question and a tough one, so I appreciate it. So I would, I would say some of the flatness that you see, I would couch it also somewhat as a success story, given what we have had as a, a background. We're still, we're still recovering there. So the fact that you don't see a huge dip is somewhat of a success indicator, even though it doesn't feel like it. So that's one thing I would, I would say. Do I want to celebrate an 81% graduation rate as like the end of our road? No, definitely not. Every kid deserves to get across that stage. But I do think it's worthy of, of recognizing that as a district, despite all of those things, we, we have, we've maintained. And through that, we've had resource challenges, we've had COVID and, and the earthquake. We also have had a changing population with different needs. And so, so there's somewhat of kind of a backstory to that as well. So I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, are there other things? The first thing that comes to mind is I, I would just invite the board to consider the, the collective effect of all the initiatives we're working on, which are all research-based and together should have a very positive impact from PLCs, giving our teachers the opportunity to develop, professionally develop on a weekly basis is major. Part of the ninth grade data review is happening during those PLC meetings. Early childhood literacy is huge, start times is huge. Like all of these things together are a big deal and should have a collective positive impact on grad rates. In terms of the ninth grade, your question about that, what we're proposing is, is pretty significant in that teachers in real time would, would engage in a review, identify students who are falling behind. For us, that's two or more Fs. So any student who has two or more Fs, there would be an immediate intervention, which is going to involve a cross-section of, of support from counselors, family outreach, differentiated instruction. It's a lot when you identify students who have fallen behind and you choose to act in real time, so.
And, and you know, I, I think one of the things we're doing different this year has to do with our messaging. I mean, we're, we're saying attendance matters, and we, we're telling parents or involving parents in, in that, you know, giving them the information they need so that they can help their kids come to school. So, and I, you know, I, I don't know what that looks like specifically, you know, at each level. And I think it's probably more effective in elementary and middle. But by high school, that, you know, maybe we might need to change, not change the messaging, but enhance it some way. But I know Communications has done a great, a great job with, you know, getting the message out that attendance does matter. I think I saw a video, and I, I'll have to go back and look on our website. And those are the things that we, as board members, when we are out there talking to the community, I mean, they do give us three minutes to talk about whatever we want before they ask the questions that they want to ask. So maybe we make that part of our, you know, our presentation, attendance matters. And, and, and tell them where they can go on the, not where they can go on the website, on the website, so that they could get more information. Because I think it's important that we, we have to deliver the message. And my only, the only other thing I wanted to, you know, when it comes to disparities, it's not just in graduation rates. But we have to recognize the disparities and, 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 and and, and work so that we can eliminate them for all of our kids. So it, so I, I, I just think that the equity work that we're doing in the district, it is, it has to continue, and it has to, it has to be embedded in everything that we do. So I am glad, you know, whether it's academies, whether it's engaging parents in ways that are different than what they might be used to. I just think we have to, we, we, we just have to keep building, at least trying to build networks, safety and safety networks for all of our kids. And in this, the next time we talk about graduation rate, it would be nice to see that fifth year, even though the state, the, the, the state does not consider it. I'm glad that we are tracking that, because that gives us an idea. Okay, if our kids, if some, if, if a certain number of kids are going to graduate, take longer, that's more resources. And then we need to figure out how, how to, how to support that and not beat ourselves up because everybody's not at the same place at the same time. I mean, if we really believe in equity, we know people are not going to be at the same place at the same time. But they have the capacity to get there. So anyway, final questions. Member Wilson? I'll do one more round, and then we're going to move on.
I, I don't want to make the assumption that everybody, that all of our families who are watching understand the difference between comprehensive, alternative charter, and special schools. Can you just briefly explain the difference, please?
Sure. So, sure. So our comprehensive high schools are large eight high schools that you would traditionally see in each neighborhood. So they're based on neighborhood boundaries. Our alternative programs are a variety of different programs. Some, they all have a specific focus. Some are focused on credit recovery, some are focused on open optional programming, but they have a, a separate kind of mission. They still are there to graduate students, but they have a specific focus. Charter schools are similar, however, they are governed outside of, of the normal kind of process you would think reporting to this board. They have their own APC board that reports up to, to this board. And they make a lot of policy decisions at that level and have, have a separate mission and focus. And then, so our, and then our alternative specialty programs, I, I kind of couch those in with alternative schools because they, while they have a specialized population, they have a different focus and mission. When you look at alternative schools, you're looking at Alaska Middle College, King Tech, Clara Stella, like I said, have a specific focus. But the, the special programs and credit recovery programs typically involve students that have some sort of risk factor or hardship that they're overcoming. And, and students are focused on those and those programs. So I hope that helps.
Yes, member Lessons?
I appreciate the question. I appreciate the naming of the alternative schools. When I, I just want to say, when I have visited them, the one thing that has struck out to me is how much autonomy students have there and how much they can direct their learning and pursue the things about which they're passionate. And there's something to that, I think, to have, to allow our students to have agency.
Thank you. Any final comments? So my final, if you can go to slide six, I'm sorry, I just needed to, I just want to make sure that. So these, the rates in the far right column, that's where we get the 80. If we averaged all those out, it would be 81%. Is that correct? Okay, so our comprehensive high schools are doing, are graduating at a, not at the highest, but I can see because of probably agency and everything else. Our alternative schools have a higher rate. Charter schools, not so much. And I, I totally understand the special schools and programs because those are very significant needs and, and a, a unique set of resources are needed there. All right, so if there are no more questions, I want to thank the team for a great job, even though we didn't send in all of our questions. Thank you. Dr. Bryant, do you have any final comments?
I do not. Thank you for the conversation.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board members. That was, that was great. I think everybody had a question. Almost everybody in the room had a question. It's great, or a comment. So that brings us to item number D, which is our first hour of public comment. So we welcome your comments, which are very important to us. The board has set aside an hour at the beginning of meetings for those who have signed up to give public comment. Those who are not heard during the first hour will be heard at the end of the agenda. Now, this is just for public comment. It does, it is not for testimony on action items. But this is an opportunity for us to listen and for you to share your views with us. Please note the following: All public comments are limited to three minutes. The timer is in front of the dais. All speakers will receive a courtesy alert when 30 seconds are remaining. Speaking time may not be given or shared with others, so your three minutes are yours. You use whatever part of it that you'd like, but you may not share it. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, and direct your comments to the chair. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the school board, about your views. If you have handouts that you wish to share with board members, please give them to Ms. Foster, seated to my left. Finally, I'd like to call your attention to the handout at the front door. It's called, it's a Welcome to Our Ed Center. It gives you guidelines and expectations for engagement and behavior in our boardroom. So I would like, like to invite you to read that so that we are, we conduct ourselves in a very, in, in good decorum. So we do not have any students signed up tonight. And so that will bring us to, I think, in person, we have Michelle Katzen. You have three minutes. It's on already, so just if you can have a seat and then pull it, maybe position it to your, there you go.
Good evening. I am Michelle Katzen, the Assistant Director of Recreational Programs with Alaska Pacific University. I am here tonight to announce a partnership of APU and the CDC Foundation, which is an independent 501(c)(3) public charity. This foundation understands the importance of teaching water safety and basic swimming skills, and they believe our residents deserve the opportunity to learn a potentially lifesaving skill at an early age. With the help of the CDC, APU can offer a pilot swimming program for 340 Anchorage students between the ages of six and 15. This will occur in the 2024 school year. Before moving to Alaska in 2021, I worked in the aquatics director, aquatics department at the Mississippi Gulf Coast YMCA for 10 years as a lifeguard, swim instructor, and director. While there, I managed and taught a third-grade swim program that reached 500 students each year. This program design has a 30-plus-year success rate and has become a rite of passage for those students entering third grade. My personal goal is to bring a yearly program to our needs. Each participating student will attend eight 45-minute classes that provide water safety education, unique to our environment, basic swimming skills and self-rescue techniques, as well as how to recognize and respond to a water emergency. Our American Red Cross swim instructors and lifeguards provide a safe, positive, and inclusive environment that promotes learning and creates a social, emotional bond in our community. These skills can last a lifetime and may be used for recreational fitness, competition, or leadership purposes, all the while keeping our communities safer in, on, and around the water. APU was chosen to receive funding from the CDC due to the unique population of Anchorage, the lack of available swim instruction, and the lack, the fact that Alaska has the highest drowning rate in the United States. As of last week, Chinook Elementary and Winterberry Elementary have expressed interest in our pilot program. We are currently working on the logistics of creating a successful program. Together, those schools have approximately 414 students that are eligible to participate. In the event all students participate, APU has backup funding through the American Red Cross Centennial Campaign to provide the same opportunity for the remaining 74 students. With the support of the Anchorage School Department, School Board, funding from the CDC and Centennial Campaign, the APU aquatics team can make a profound difference in the safety of the next generation of Alaskan residents. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jennifer Phillips. In person, Jennifer Phillips. We don't see Ms. Phillips. So that concludes our public comment. We will have more testimony as we get into our action items. All right, thank you. That brings us to item E, Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as, as written? Is there any opposition or objection, sorry, objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. And that brings us to item F, which, which are. And that brings us to item F, which, which are our action items.
Madam President, I move to approve AST memorandum number zero five three, six-year capital improvement plan, CIP project tables, to approve the attached Anchorage School District six-year capital improvement plan tables for July one, two thousand and twenty-four to June thirty, two thousand and thirty.
Moved in second to approve memorandum number zero five three. We have people signed up to speak on, oh, no, we don't. We don't have anyone signed up for zero five three. Um, the motion before you is to approve zero five three. Um, is there any discussion? Yes.
I just wanted to, uh, earlier today, we had a work session, and at our last board meeting, we had a, a conversation about, um, the scale of our deferred maintenance, which is now over a billion dollars. And this six-year capital improvement plan allows us to tackle maybe thirty-five percent of it.
Good point.
All of the projects here have merit. There's another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of work out there that's not on these tables. So I just, the scale of the need with two point two billion dollars worth of infrastructure that we need to maintain, otherwise nature will take its course, um, is tremendous. Uh, and I think it's imperative that the board, um, moves forward in passing this CIP. And, um, I'll pause there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Member, um, Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I've, uh, I think this is a better six-year plan than we have seen the last few years. Um, but I still remain concerned about, um, the inlet view school replacement being on it. And I still support doing a major remodel at inlet school rather than a full school replacement. And, um, for all the reasons that I've articulated many times before this board, um, I have a, uh, proposed amendment that, could you pass one of those down to me? And I submitted it to the secretary, um, several days ago. So if you could just pass those down, there's copies. I would point out that this draft indicates a, a prior number for the, for the remodel design, which was, used to be eighteen million, but to the, during the work session today, it was identified as a new number, because all costs are going up to twenty-four million dollars. So, um, even at twenty-four million dollars, if we were to replace the inlet school replacement with a remodel design, it would save, um, about twenty, well, more than twenty million dollars, twenty-two million dollars.
Remember, Donley, can I?
I'm just speaking, I'm speaking, and then I'm going to move something.
Okay, okay, but we need to get a second before we speak too much.
No, we do not need to get a second. We've been over this many times.
And we still disagree.
And it's very clear. I went all the way to the experts on Robert's.
Continue, Member Donley.
That your decision was wrong, and we were supposed to follow those Robert's Rules of Order.
Member Donley, continue.
What you're saying right now.
Member Donley, go on and continue with your comment and make your, make your amendment.
Two years ago, and we had.
No, we did not. But go on.
Their ruling from the experts, uh, that we had hired about Robert's Rules of Order about this.
Go on, Member Donley. Go back to your motion or your comments before your motion.
On our erroneous Robert Rules of Orders situation. So anyhow, I was explaining that if we were to transfer this first, this item into a remodel, it would save about twenty-two million dollars, roughly. Um, with that, um, I'm going to move, uh, amendment number one with a revision to change the eighteen million to twenty-four million to replace the inlet view school replacement with an inlet view school major remodel for the cost of twenty-four million dollars in the six-year plan.
So the, the amount, both of the amounts in your, in this, on this document needs to be twenty-four million dollars now? Is that what you're saying?
No, just the one that says eighteen million would be changed.
Oh, I see, I see, I see. Is there a second? Hearing no second, that, uh, amendment fails. Do you have, uh, I think you had a couple? Did you have another?
It was only one on this.
Oh, on this one. Yes. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on memorandum numbers, uh, move to approve memorandum number zero five three? Not seeing any, we'll take a voice vote.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Hey, that passes, uh, six yays to one nay. Thank you. Moving on to action item number two.
Madam President, I move to approve AST memorandum number zero five four, approval of April two thousand and twenty-four bond proposal to approve the following bond proposal. Proposition one, roof replacement and improvements, security improvements, Romig Middle School renovation design, and Love View Elementary School replacement and planning and design for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five projects in the amount of sixty-two million, three hundred and seventy thousand.
Second.
Moved in second to approve memorandum number zero five four. We have several people signed up, uh, to provide com, uh, testimony. We'll start with Michael Teo. I, I think I said that right. I'm sorry if I didn't. Uh, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is, uh, Michael Teo, parent of a first grader here at school. No worries. So, um, I want to offer my comments today in support of, uh, memorandum fifty-four proposal for the, the bond. I've read through the proposed bond and, uh, listened to some of the meetings that have happened as it was developed. I find all the projects to be reasonable, uh, cost-effective way to extend the life of ASD facilities and replace them when beyond their service life. All these projects are timely, if not overdue. The bond addresses safety, mechanically sound buildings, and seismically strong buildings as its main points. All these buildings were put into service when security needs were not as great as they are today. They were built when engineering could not provide as much resistance to earthquakes. And in the case of priority two, the schools outlived its safety, structural, and mechanical lifespan. By investing now, we give students the schools they need to learn. Passing on these projects puts these schools farther behind with ever-increasing obstacles to catch up. Secondly, I recognize this bond will be asking for community support of our schools. I believe it will have community support because it addresses schools that serve the neighborhoods they occupy. The facilities that receive funding from this bond span from the northeast of Anchorage to the south of Anchorage, benefiting a wide range of neighborhood schools throughout the district. These are schools that accept all from their neighborhoods and some from beyond. They don't have any background self-sorting or what economists would call cream skim. Rather, they support the diversity of their neighborhoods, be it economic diversity, ethnic, racial, or political diversity. I support neighborhood schools for the way they educate their diverse, their diverse communities. This bond will strengthen neighborhood schools, and I ask for you to support it tonight. Please send the bond as proposed to the community for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next, we have Martin Hanson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here so many times, and thank you for listening. My name is Martin Hanson. Uh, we live next door to Inlet View School. I'm a substitute, uh, teacher working as, or working as a kindergarten teacher at Olawa School. My degree from the University of California is in geography with an emphasis on geomorphology. That's how our earth surfaces are formed. Um, continental drift, folding, and earthquakes are part of that. The Inlet View Elementary School Design Team was given one overriding parameter. Inlet View, and this is it, Elan, the Inlet View Elementary School students will not be relocated during construction. Cost and risk, secondary and tertiary considerations. Risk. Anchorage has five seismic zone risks. Number one is the lowest, number five is the highest. Inlet View School surrounding neighborhood are in zone five, the highest risk zones. Despite this risk, ASD elected to replace the existing one-story school, a school that survived the nineteen sixty-four and the twenty-eighteen earthquakes with minor damage, with a two-story school. Two hundred and ninety students, an entire school staff, and fifty million taxpayers' dollars are at risk because safety was not a priority. This plan was developed in secret and was revealed to the neighbors after completion. They were told it was not a, they were not really interested in comments. They just wanted to inform us, and that has led to at least one major school bond being defeated and maybe the next. Please consider the safety of the two hundred and ninety students and staff and the taxpayers' fifty million dollars. I'm urging you to take five's replacement off the school bond, repair, remodel, and renovate our beloved school. The Planning Department has an interactive seismic risk map. I emailed it to you. I don't know that you received it yet. Uh, you may won't enjoy listening to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, Deborah Hanson. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, as you probably know, I'm related to Martin Hanson. I'm here for the same issue. Um, a friend asked me why I opposed the rebuild that add value to my house. And I'll tell you why. Because you're wasting money. Dave Donley just told you you're wasting twenty-two million dollars. And I, I have a hard time. I've been in Alaska a long time, and I've been through all the stuff the state's wasted money on. It's hard to see it wasted locally. And it's hard to see ASD putting an ugly, dark, cold elementary school with a much bigger parking lot and a much smaller playground in. I've got six points to make, and I'm going to go over them real quick, because you've heard them before, but I just want to get it on the record because we're not going to give up. The proposed Inlet View School is the most expensive option for fixing up the school. You guys all know that. The thirty percent expansion that is proposed in the rebuild is predicated on out-of-boundary enrollment with specialized programs such as the Elementary School International Baccalaureate. ASD is talking about cutting back neighborhood schools and doing all this, and you all are doing it. Um, I, I'm just amazed. Longtime taxpayer residents do not support moving the school. Yes, the parents do because they don't want to have their kids moved. Even the, even an ASD planning, construction employee said that the new, uh, proposed site is not the best location. Fifth point, so I only have two more points. Uh, when the neighborhood was finally included, we were ignored. For example, I pointed out that the planned parking lot is larger than necessary. Envision came out and said, oh, we reduced the spaces. Yes, they did, but they didn't make the parking lot any smaller. So you're wasting money on a bigger parking lot than you need with the poor traffic plan. Um, when they even showed the proposed traffic plan, they had L Street being three lanes. You know, you can't do anything about the fact that L Street is actually two lanes there. It's not three lanes. Uh, the twenty-two, the two thousand and twenty-two bond failed. Inlet View was cited by ASD's own study as one of the reasons, one of the main reasons. You've already got twenty-six million unencumbered dollars from the school, from the state of Alaska, and you're ignoring the public will and, and just playing games with money in the whole process. Anyway, I urge you to try again. Keep the school where it is. Save twenty-two million dollars. You've got a backlog. Use it for that. Don't waste money. We don't have it here. Anyway, thanks for listening to me. I hope you have a good holiday. And sorry to keep bringing it up, but you guys, you've got to listen at some point to people. This is not going to work out well. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ashley List. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I am Ashley List. I have three kids at Inlet View. And the first time I heard about the need for the school replacement and school repairs was when I was pregnant with my oldest, who's going to be at middle school next year. Um, my youngest probably won't be at Inlet View by the time it's rebuilt, but I really care about the school as a community member. Um, I was a neighbor for a long time, and I am asking you to support memorandum fifty-four in keeping Inlet View on the bond. Right now, the district has capital funds in hand, and having the remainder of the funding on the bond would help the school be, uh, replaced in a safe way. And to keep the, um, school in the neighborhood, to serve the neighborhood, um, Inlet View serves not just South Edition, but, uh, Partispanard and Huntington Park and Forest Park. Yes, there's kids that live in million-dollar homes there, but there's also kids that live in apartments over by the bear tooth. There's kids whose families struggle with housing. So, um, it has a thirty-three percent low-income family, uh, demographic, eleven percent of kids have disabilities. It's fifty-five percent white, forty-five percent non-white. And if you look a few blocks away at Two Catch Optional, which is a charter school and self-selecting, um, they've got about half that rate of low-income students. They've got about two-thirds that rate of students with disabilities. Um, and they're three-quarter white, one-quarter non-white. So I think Inlet View shows, um, the need for keeping strong neighborhood schools so that all children have the opportunity of fantastic programs like the International Baccalaureate Program there. Um, the neighborhood is, uh, expected to have increased population in the two thousand and forty Anchorage Land Use Plan as there's infill development, excuse me. The building's past its economic life. The district clearly showed that the most economical solution is a full school replacement. Um, and in addition to inadequate sewage, heating, um, leaky roof, that sort of thing. Um, last year, there was a lockdown where the police were looking for, um, an armed person in the neighborhood. This year, um, a transient person made his way into the school and under a pretense of visiting a student, person was unrelated to school. But that vestibule is very, um, ill-designed for safety. And I think as other schools are getting, excuse me, as other schools are getting, uh, safe vestibule reentry designs, bulletproof glass, I think Inlet View deserves that, um, same level of consideration. And as far as the seismic goes, it's a neighborhood school, and for better or worse, the students are living in homes that are also within that same seismic zone. And personally, I feel much better about my kids being in a brand-new designed building, um, with safe engineering as opposed to being at home in.
Thank you very much. Now, I, I'm going to apologize for the next name. Um, Renew Groen. Green. I'm, I'm gonna let you say it. Thank you. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Uh, Green is the English variant of it. Yeah, my name is Rhino Groen. Um, and, uh, I'm a mom of Inlet View kids, and I'm actually excited to be here. Thanks for having me. Um, we are so close to a new school, and we've been there so many times. We are like so close to a safe school building for our kids and children to come in the future. I'll be very, very short of why we need it, because you all know that already. Broken pipes very frequently, ongoing issues with heating system, no vestibule, no line of sight for safety, et cetera, et cetera. And ASD professionals have already said that a new construction is better than repairs in the long run for financial reasons as well as for safety reasons. Um, so yeah, we've been through countless planning meetings. We've been through testimonies. We've made bridges a lot with neighbors. Unfortunately, we couldn't make all the bridges to every single neighbor. But I went to all the neighbors in the immediate vicinity as well as around with one of the architects, and we've tried to talk with them to explain what was the intention with the design, ask question, or, um, respond to questions, and ask them if they would be okay. We put a green dot on their house on a map, and there's an overwhelming support from our neighborhood. I know that you hear a lot from a few neighbors, but there's a good support. And the UDC meeting, uh, the UDC has that map with all those green dots. We would love to have a new school for our children. Um, so yeah, that's where my excitement comes from. Um, let me see what else I wanted to indicate here. Um, I think that's actually it. It's repeating that excitement. I think we're just so close we can make it, you know? Let, let's just do it. Let's, um, Let's just do it. Let's, let's, let's make sure that we can send our kids to a safe school. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you very much. Our next person is Teri Davenport. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Teri Davenport and I'm the parent of a second grader at Inlet View Elementary. I'm here tonight to express my enthusiastic support for including the IVE replacement building on the school bond. Now, I don't need to repeat all the health and safety reasons that support building a new school. While those reasons are all true and one could spend hours talking about them, ASD has long recognized the need for a new school since at least the 2015 Capital Improvement Plan. I'd instead like to discuss why it's so critical that the project be placed on this upcoming bond. If the school board keeps kicking the can down the road and fails to take immediate action on the Inlet View project, the familiar drumbeat of anti-school Anchorage residents arguing to instead close the school is not only going to get louder, but I fear it may become deafening. Those critics of the rebuild suggest that instead of providing a safe neighborhood school building in South Edition, the residents of South Edition, Spinnard, and Huntington Park, et cetera, should be forced to bus their kids to schools in other neighborhoods. The critics paint a Pollyanna view of what would happen. The engaged parents at Inlet View would become engaged parents at the other schools, thus helping achieve greater outcomes at those schools. But we all know that's not how things would work. If the school board closed a beloved school like Inlet View, those families, like mine, would leave ASD in droves in favor of private schools and homeschooling. Other families would turn to already overcrowded immersion, charter, and optional schools. Now, I know that none of the members of this board believe that Inlet View should be closed. And for good reason. Inlet View is a shining example of neighborhood schools getting it right. It has a socio-economically diverse student body with high academic outcomes, the result from strong parental involvement and outstanding teachers and administrators. And as we know, strong neighborhood schools are the integral building blocks of quality public education. There's never going to be an ideal time to fund major capital improvements like this when there are so many competing interests for these limited funds. But as we've seen from the delays that have gotten us to this point, the construction costs are only going to multiply and the effort to fund the project made exponentially harder the longer the school board waits. Now is the time to secure funding for the new IVE. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ben Spees. I'm sorry. I, I want to say Spice, but that's not right either. I'll let you say it. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ben Spees and I.
Got it right. Almost. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here to speak in support of the school bond for Inlet View Elementary School. I live in downtown Anchorage on H Street. My son Alexander is a first grader in Mrs. Bordley's class at Inlet View School and my other son formerly attended school there from second through sixth grade. Inlet View Elementary School is a terrific community school that is integral to our neighborhood. As you know, this school was built in nineteen fifty-seven and was one of the oldest in the district. Not surprisingly, the school falls short of many district standards, including safety, traffic, and other items. The school is overcrowded with one room doubling as a gymnasium and cafeteria and multipurpose rooms. And importantly, the school needs a safe entry vestibule. Nonetheless, this school is a well-loved part of our neighborhood and the opportunity for my children to be a part of this school and this community was a big part of the reason we chose to live in this neighborhood. Our school is socio-economically diverse, it has committed parents and staff, and it is a focal point of our downtown neighborhood. I've read through the bond. Renovation and replacement is long overdue for this school. I support the new school as designed and I urge you to support this bond. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Next, we have Beth Daly Gamble. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening Superintendent Bright and good evening Madam Bellamy and the board members. Hello. I'm a teacher of twenty-one years with sixteen years at Inlet View. And I'm the founding IB program coordinator who started our IB programs journey back in two thousand and eighteen. I am also the facilitator of the student leadership team at Inlet View and I'm an Inlet View parent of two. I want to bring you up to speed with what's been in the works for our community and learners at Inlet View for over three years in the hopes that we get a better, supportive, safe, and suitable learning facility. In the fall of two thousand and twenty, our building design committee that I was a part of developed important goals. These goals were made because our present building does not provide for the education and the safety needs of our students. Here are some of those goals. Give our school a safe building with reliable security and surveillance system. Provide fire safety with building-wide sprinkler system, which we've never had. Be a structure free of constant repairs. Provide more spaces, like having a different space for PE class and lunch. Give us a replaced roof that does not leak upon our Apple TVs and other expensive technology. Provide larger spaces for learning and collaboration for support of our incredible IB program. Be a safe and reliable support and center for our downtown community. Through our new PLC process for ASD, we modified our Inlet View mission statement and here it is. Orcas are caring, knowledgeable enquirers who are empowered to solve real-world problems. This is a real-world problem. We're empowered to try and solve it. That is incredibly representative of our Inlet View community of students, teachers, and families. We are the first and only IB PYP in Alaska. That means we're the only international baccalaureate elementary level program in the whole state. We are strong together and we build amazing relationships, connections, and solutions. We want you to be a part of this one. We're motivated, engaged, positive, and proactive. In our neighborhood, seventy-five percent, over seventy-five percent of our kindergartners live in our neighborhood community.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here. Zach Fields. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thanks, Chair Bellamy, and thanks everyone for the opportunity to be here. I think that you covered many of the key issues during your work session today. The school board has detailed information about school needs across our district and is making decisions not within a political timeframe of a year or two, but a timeframe that makes sense for generations of students and for buildings that will last sixty years or longer. A thriving Anchorage depends on healthy neighborhood schools across all our neighborhoods. No student's education should be dependent on a particular neighborhood's wealth or power, and a plebiscite on individual schools would put politics ahead of the needs of students. Students need safe, functional facilities to learn and achieve good academic outcomes. This has been well documented in jurisprudence going back at least to Brown versus the Board. Kids are not political. They count on you and us to be there for them. This bond package is balanced. It's driven by data and the needs of kids. And I appreciate that you all have thought about political implications of what you do, but ultimately just acted in the interest of kids. Because really, we should only care about the political implications of a school decision insofar as we need to understand enough to navigate the politics to deliver the right outcome for kids. I don't think there's anything more powerful than seeing a poor kid in a great public school where a committed team of parents, teachers, and administrators said, says, this kid is as important as any kid on earth and we will be there for her and do whatever it takes to succeed. And we know that's true. At Inlet View, it's true at Spring Hill, it's true at Alpenglow, it's true at Romig, it's true at every school on this bond. I know there's one homeowner who doesn't want Inlet View's student drop-off driveway to egress near his house. Another homeowner doesn't want a school building closer to their house. We know there's anti-education special interest groups that will use any opportunity to attack public schools. Precisely because schools are our most important engine of economic opportunity and equal opportunity, the haters will interminably repeat the lie that remodeling is cheaper even though building replacement is more economical as documented by your staff, and that has been documented and explained ad nauseum. Capital investments tell us a lot about our community. Do we believe in our future here in Anchorage? Is this the kind of city where we will tell families, yes, we invest in our schools? Yes, we have a bright future? I hope so. I think most Anchorage residents believe in the positive vision for the city that you're articulating with this bond and thank you for advancing it.
Thank you very much. Next is Maura Smith. Unphone. Star six to unmute, Ms. Smith. Maura.
Hello, Madam President.
Yes, that's you. You're up.
Good evening.
You have three minutes.
My apologies. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to all of the board members and administrators for your service to our community. I am the mom of a third-grade boy at Inlet View Elementary who is a proud alumni of Mrs. Daly Gamble's amazing second-grade class. And I am testifying on my own behalf today in support of memorandum zero-five-four, the approval of the April bond proposal. I went back, like Ms. Davenport mentioned, and looked at previous capital improvement plans. And the replacement or substantial reconstruction of Inlet View Elementary has been on every single capital improvement plan since two thousand and eleven. And it hasn't been done. This is a can that when you kick it down the road, becomes a snowball and grows, only grows in cost. So while we have kicked this can down the road for twelve years, in two thousand and twenty-four, we had the opportunity through this bond to finally pull the trigger and make the decision to replace the school consistent with the, with the process that took place. It is certainly the case that it will not get less expensive in the future to make the bold and important decision that you will make tonight. These are challenging times. We need to support neighborhood schools if for no other reason than that it's easier in the midst of a snowstorm when we have snowplowing challenges to get our kids to school, if indeed they are open. And so in light of all of that, your expert, Shannon Bingham, and the overwhelming, I should say, physical challenges with the school, recommended replacement, not remodeling of this building. And there has been no contrary expert report suggesting replacement, excuse me, remodeling, instead simply unhappiness with that decision. My final item is that I, I want to turn really quickly to memo zero-five-three, which you have just approved. And once again, I would recommend the formal reinstatement of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee in light of the substantial backlog of capital improvements that you as a board have to, have to contend with. Our schools are our biggest investment and the ROI on this investment is clear and is well set forth in the record before you, both at this meeting and in many other meetings. So thank you for your leadership and thank you for your support of Inlet View.
Thank you very much. And next is David Hanson. Welcome, Mr. Hanson. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Always nice to see you guys. Feel like it's been a couple of years now. So with that, I'd say, Chair Anchorage School Board, as a graduate of the Anchorage School District who after college and a master's degree came back here, I would ask you to reconsider and remove, remove adding an Inlet View replacement to the proposed school bond. The school board has already chosen to give twenty-six million dollars unallocated funds from the state to Inlet View. This is a wonderful gift. Let's not load the bond, the proposed school bond, with one school's wish list and bring down all the other schools in need of basic repair. I ask you to remodel and repair Inlet View with that twenty-six million dollars. In the spirit of the holidays, I'd like to say I'm thankful for public schools giving great access to all students. And I'd like to guys, wish you all a very restful holiday weekend. I know last week was probably trying. And I'll see you next time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public testimony. So we are back to discussion with the board. The motion before you is to approve memorandum number zero-five-four. Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to make a point of order. It is absolutely appropriate under Robert's Rules of Order for members to discuss the main motion before them, including ramifications of that main motion prior to making an amendment motion. That, we have received that in writing from Jurassic Parliament through the experts that have been hired to train this board in, in Robert's Rules of Order procedures. I've never ever in twenty-three years of elected office seen any different interpretation of that rules other than the one that has been proffered at times on this board. And the only, I don't want to speculate why that extraordinary and inaccurate interpretation of Robert's rules has been exercised here in the past. But I went through the process of going to the nationally recognized experts that this board utilizes to make it clear that amendments can be proposed after a discussion of the main motion and the content of the main motion. And I would greatly appreciate that that expert guidance be followed tonight and that my discussion of the main motion, which may lead to an amendment, it will not be interrupted in the future.
Member Donnelly, if you will share what you have. I have not seen anything.
Yes, you have.
No, I have not.
You've got it in writing.
I did not. That's a whole nother discussion. If you will proceed with whatever your comments are on memorandum number zero-five-four. I hear everything that you're saying and it's not going to be solved here tonight. I will give you the discretion, since you believe that it is, that we have had some kind of guidance. I'm just not aware of it. So proceed, sir, with your comments on, on memorandum zero-five-four.
So we're faced with a main motion here that includes nineteen million dollars to be a portion of the funding for a total cost of a fifty-million-dollar new elementary school. I have consistently supported a major remodel for this school. In fact, back in two thousand and seventeen, when I was first elected to the board, the very first school I visited was Inlet View. And walked through the school and talked to the staff there at that time and identified a series of projects that I came forward and discussed with the administration that I felt needed to be done immediately. And at that time, I was told that, no, no, let's not, don't do that. Don't come forward with these yet. It's, we're working on a package that we're going to try to do them all at the same time and it'll be more economical that way. So at that time, I didn't move forward with the specifics that I wanted to do. Immediate value for other projects that clearly the economics of it would support a replacement. But that's not the case we're faced with in this community at this time. Money is very short right now. This board is looking at what's been explained as a ninety-five-million-dollar deficit for the coming year. Last year, this board voted to increase class sizes. I'm, and that was with a much less significant deficit being presented. It was interesting here on the news tonight that the Juno School Board was faced with a massive dilemma of something like a two-million-dollar deficit. What were they going to, how, they're going to handle that? Well, the significance of what this board is faced with today as far as next year's school year budget is astronomical. And to dedicate this much of available funds to a single project at this time, I think is, is very concerning and to also go back to the voters to ask for nineteen million dollars when this, last time this was on the ballot, it was rejected by the voters. And that subsequent surveys of the voters indicated that this was the margin of difference in the failure of those bonds. in the failure of those bonds. I really think we need to move forward and get these other projects done and not endanger the full bond package with trying again to force through a full replacement in the new school. So I've been trying to come up with ways to try to protect the other projects on this bond proposal because I support those. And so that was one of the reasons why I wanted to try to change the CIP in the previous memorandum, was to try to protect that, those projects, and to have a CIP that could spread the wealth out more fairly across the community. Since that failed, I have to look at what we're really dealing with here. You know, the United States, as I mentioned during our work session, is a constitutional republic. It's not a democracy. There are democratic elements to our constitutional republic, and some of those include referendums, initiatives, and bond propositions that are approved by a majority. That is a democratic process, a majority vote rules. It's very important that voters be presented with fair propositions when we do go to a purely democratic process. I don't believe that's happened in the history of this particular project, Madam President, in that when this was first brought forward in 2020, it was linked in with, it was jumbled together with $40 million in needed school earthquake repairs. I strongly supported those needed repairs, and I believe the community obviously also did too. But I did not feel it was appropriate to begin the process that would lead us to this day of a $50 million new school by mixing design money in with very, very seriously in needed earthquake repairs. My proposal at that time to break out those earthquake repairs into a separate bond, which I was very confident would pass overwhelmingly, was not supported by the board at that time. And so voters were presented with a choice. If you didn't like the idea of starting to go down the road to a $50 million new school, you had to vote against earthquake repairs. Well, I don't think that's the highest form of democracy. I do not think that that's the way democracy is supposed to work. Voters should be entitled to a legitimate decision-making process when they cast their votes, and not to be presented with a Hobson's Choice like that, a no-win scenario, where you've got to accept something if you're going to do something that really has to be done. And that, that was, again, the case when the last block of money for design for this project was adopted in the 2013 bond, and that was $1,500,000, because it was, once again, linked in with very, very important and vital projects for this community, including really important school safety projects, which I have placed a high priority on, advocated for. So voters like me, once again, were presented with a situation where if I wanted to go along, if to get safety for elementary schools with the Vestivale remodeling project, which I think is just essential for the protection of our children, I had to vote for something that would lead to a $50 million school that I did not support. That's not democracy. That's not fair. That's not a legitimate way to conduct the democratic process. You make arguments that, well, we may lump all these things together, but in the past, this community has frequently, actually multiple times, broke out major, significant bond for new schools to have separate votes. And the history of that is that eventually all those schools were approved. I don't know of any school, I can't think of any, that ever didn't make it because they did on their own merit. And that's the way it ought to be. On something that big and that significant, voters should be entitled to make the decision on the merits of the specific proposition being proposed and not be forced to reject other really important, needed things that I think there's overwhelming consensus on to be able to do a vote how they really feel about the question of whether it should be a new school at this time, or a remodel at this time, or something else. So I really am concerned that this specific proposal has this rolled in again, which would, you know, with a bunch of projects that I think are just very, very vital to our schools. I don't want to see those projects jeopardized by having the same thing that happened, that happened the last time this was put before the public in this way. So I do believe it would be appropriate to have it broke out in a separate bond. And so I have prepared an amendment which would simply separate the bond proposition before us here to have a separate proposition for Inlet View Elementary School replacement and planning design in the same amount of money, but to be voted on separately by the voters. And I have a copy of that here, and I submitted copies on Sunday to the clerk, to the secretary, and I brought copies with me to pass out so that everybody could have a copy. And at this time, Madam President, I would move amendment number one to memorandum 54, which would break out the Inlet View school to allow a separate vote by voters on the $19 million that's on this bond proposal.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second to the amendment? Seeing and hearing no second, that amendment fails. Is there, did you have something else, Member Donnelly? Or is there other comments? We can begin discussion.
We could have other discussion about, people want to talk about the main motion. I have another amendment, but you don't have to take it down. It's up to you.
So there's no second for your, for this amendment? So it fails?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Why don't you continue?
Thank you. So basically, now that the board has decided that it shall be combined, and even if it wasn't, I think it's really important, and I've brought this up at, I think, our last meeting, I asked the question at our prior work session, what would appear on the ballot? What information would voters actually get about what this $19 million is or that would go towards the new Inlet View Elementary replacement? And actually, what it is, is a total of a $50 million project, which includes about $5 million in planning that have been on previous bonds, and also a little more than $26 million that this board in memo 151S set aside for Inlet View School. That $26 million was a one-time money that came from the Alaska Legislature that was not earmarked. It was fully fungible, could be used for any high priority or any priority that the school board chose to use it for. At that time, I argued that in the face of a $95 million in growing, based on the final collective bargaining decisions, projected debt for next year, it would be a wiser move to keep that money aside for, as a shock absorber in case we needed it. And I certainly don't see any path forward in which we won't need money, such, one-time money such as this, to try to mitigate the loss of really important things to parents and students in this district. We know that the massive, it would take massive, serious cuts to very valuable programs and class sizes, increases in class sizes to come anywhere close to $95 million. I don't think we could, I just don't have any clear vision at all how we're ever going to get there. Now, hopefully, there's some rabbit in the hat, as my very first political science professor used to explain it, that the administration has, is going to pull out the last minute or so and say, well, we found 20 million here, or 10 million there, and we've seen that happen in the past. But the magnitude of this particular problem is so immense that I don't think we can even anticipate that this time. So I'm very concerned about that, and I think voters should have that information of what this $19 million does. This $19 million essentially would follow up and add to that $26 million. And until this $19 million is approved in this bond, that 26 remains available to this board to use if it needs it, to help prevent very serious, drastic cuts to programs that parents and students find very valuable in this district, and to prevent, hopefully, or mitigate, you know, class size increases that we may be forced to consider next year, and frankly, also school closures we might be forced to consider. So I think there's a definite linkage there, and voters need to know about that. They deserve to know about that when they vote on this bond proposition as currently before the board. So I asked at the last work session whether that information would be on the bond, but we hadn't received an answer to that question yet. So what I was hoping is the bond would reflect, actually, all the funding sources and the total amount of the projects, so voters would have that information, which I think is essential in a democratic process, that basic information be on the ballot for the voters. So I tried to come up with how would we ensure that that occurs, because, of course, these bonds are very complicated and they have a lot of legal issues surrounding them. Bond language is very, it's a specialty of some attorneys, how to properly craft it. So it's not at all absolutely clear what this board can compel the language on the bond to specifically be. So I tried to think of a way where we could express the goal of having fully informed voters, be able, a voter be able to look at the ballot and be fully informed of what they're actually voting for, and what it involves. So with that, I thought the best way to approach that would be to say that the intent of this board was that this information shall appear on the ballot, and that that would give the experts the leeway to say, if somehow they couldn't do that, and to keep the process going and not hamper the process, the legal process at all in getting there. So I've crafted an amendment, which is amendment number two to memorandum 54, and it basically says that. It says the intent of the school board, that the question of approval of funding for Inlet View replacement for the $18,998,000 shall include information on the ballot setting out the past, current, and proposed funding sources and the total cost of the project. So with that, I will move that amendment number two.
Thank you, Member.
Have copies, ma'am.
Have copies? Thank you, Member Donnelly. So the amendment before the body is coming around to you, but it essentially adds language to the bond that gives the funding sources. Is there a second? You have a question? Yes, your question?
How, this is a question. How does setting out information on past, current, and proposed funding sources align with prior practice? When we've had a big project, Inlet View is not the only, right, design, ROMIC, design funding in year one and project funding year or two later. What is the procedure for normal bond language, please?
It, it has been done in the past where they had multiple different types of funding for a project. It's been quite a few years. Obviously, George remembers, he was here for all of them. But it has been done before as a mechanism to show the public just that of the bonded amount, there were also other, other funding sources to fulfill the total requirement.
So still, okay, so we, did that answer your question? So the motion before you, I mean, I'm sorry, the amendment before you is to add the language that's to the actual bond? Is there a second so we can continue to discuss? Seeing no second, that amendment fails. So we are back to the main motion to approve memorandum number 054. To approve the following bond proposal. Proposition one, roof replacement and improvements, security improvements, ROMIC middle school renovation design, Inlet View Elementary School replacement, and planning and design for 2425 projects in the amount of $62,370. Moved by Member Jacob, second by Member Wilson. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Member Higgins?
Yeah, I just want to comment on a couple of the statements. First of all, I appreciate, Member Donnelly was the one that put the money forward for the remodel, I think, and I appreciate that. And one of the presentations during this period, when all this was going on, came from the remodel, or the rebuilding of new school on base, and they talked about the fact that when it reaches a certain point, that it doesn't make sense not to go ahead and complete the school and put a new one in. They don't think that was a good investment, and that's kind of part of what the issue is here. We've got funding sources from different sources to contribute. I have no problem with putting on the bond, but there's a process for putting language on there that gets reviewed and approved, and I don't really want, don't want to preempt that process, okay, within the language that goes on there. But, so I wouldn't object to if they added in, but I also don't want to get ahead of it. But it just, there reaches a point when the cost is so significant that you look at the issue of whether or not you want to rebuild or not. We put, you're right, there's a lot of money dedicated towards the remodel already. This would make the difference of where we can basically get the benefits of a new school versus a remodel that makes a difference on how long school is, the maintenance, the other issues, the duration. There was some benefits to that. So if it was all a wash even, I have to, have to say, I think these are good discussion points, but I, like I said, I was impressed by the military statements with the, on the base, with the government, saying, when it reaches this point, we want to rebuild, we're putting in so much money. I think we're in that same close category within that, and that's why I support the idea of putting this language in there, and I appreciate that. But thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the main motion, on the motion before you?
Yes.
I had another question, and this is based on my notes from our work session. When Mr. Anderson said that a renovation would cost $24 million, but that the extras in 10 to 15 years would, you know, more than double that. We've heard about our massive structural deficit. Where does, under renovation, where does the money come to continue doing the extras over the 10 to 15 years down the road? Does that come from additional bonds, or does that come from ongoing operations?
Well, clearly, our primary source over the last, however many decades, has been bonds. Occasionally, there's other funding that becomes available, like we saw with state bond reimbursement funds, and there certainly is grants that we use, but for major renovations, the vast majority of those are bonds.
I guess I was speaking to the rest of the, not the renovation itself, but the sort of the follow-up work that.
Oh, it would be part of a new board memo five, six years from now for a new portion of something that was never touched during a renewal.
Okay. Here's your bond work.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Member Holloman, I see your hand.
Thank you. I would like to weigh in and say that the, the idea of everything being voted on individually, I think, becomes problematic. The board spends a lot of time on this, and I think it's our responsibility to present a slate to the public that's balanced, that addresses the various needs. The idea that the folks that are sitting down with the ballot can make fully informed choices about everything in all the different areas, I think that most people think about it, just realize most people don't have that understanding of the district or what our different needs are. And it also, you know, just. Um, and it also, you know, just a simple question like, we might save money over the next ten or fifteen years, we would wind up spending more money over twenty five if we went with a remodel. Uh, I, I think it's important to understand, we absolutely plan on Anchorage being here for twenty five years or fifty years or longer, and that the long-term choice uh, for what's most economical is what's going to ultimately put more money directly in educating kids um, as opposed to uh, spending quite a bit of money on a building this, in the next year or two, uh, and then spending quite a bit of money again, five or ten years out, and five more years out, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I think it's our responsibility to look at all those different questions, come up with reason, a reasonable scenario, and then go convince the public that we've got this right. And, you know, of course, some people are going to disagree. Uh, some people are going to pick one particular project and make a vote based only on, on that, and they get to do that, but it doesn't relieve the board from their obligation to look at the needs all around the district, balance them against each other, make the right choices, uh, and then ask the public's permission to go into debt, which is what the, the ballot really is. Is, I don't think it was ever really intended for people to choose the projects they liked. It's us explaining uh, that we need to borrow this money in order to run the district most efficiently, and we do need the public's permission for that. I, I, I think that says it should be. So I, this has been coming around again and again. Um, it is a complex time. It is tough to talk about building a brand new school while we're talking about closing some schools. Uh, again, if someone actually spends time studying the locations of our sixty some elementary schools can recognize there needs to be a good functioning building in the Inlet View community. Um, there's not a good alternative close by. Um, and that's, that's just how the city is laid out, it's how it grew up. Um, it was sited there a long time ago, and it's served the need well, but we need to do that again, and uh, I will be voting in favor of it. I hope the board will support it.
Thank you very much. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, uh, we're ready for the vote. The motion before you is to approve memorandum number zero four five. Um, I'm sorry, zero five four. Um, voice, voice vote at this time, please, thank you.
Member Donley?
No.
Member Higgins? Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Student representative PAC?
Yes.
And President Bellamy?
The twenty twenty four bond uh, proposal package is approved. Uh, six yays, one nay, and an advisory board, EA vote from our student. Thank you very much, we're moving on to non-action items. This item will be back before you uh, at our next meeting, which is December fifth. Um, we have no other individuals signed up for public comment. That brings us to our superintendent update, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm going to just stick to words of gratitude for my brief remarks, so first off, a major thank you to the board for setting goals that are compelling and compel the district to act with urgency to improve academic outcomes. That word continues with our big six and our discussions to finalize our revised board goals. That's number one, and number two, I just want to thank our families, our staff, specifically snow operators, who have truly worked around the clock uh, during one of the snowiest Novembers in history, as we all know. So our, our city and state operators were hard at work, it was no easy feat, and our ASD operations staff spent a, a lot of early mornings driving uh, along the roads to make sure whether they were safe or not for, for students and in school buses and the like. And, you know, I will be the first to say that remote learning has been far from perfect, but uh, it isn't lost on us that winter is not over, in fact, it just started, and this is a great opportunity for the district to engage in those cycles of continuous improvement and to have great conversations about what can we do to be even better prepared in the event of inclement weather, because it's not a matter of if an event will happen, it's when it will happen. So whether it's a snow day, whether it's a remote day, they are two different things. Uh, student safety is the, the top priority for, for the district, and uh, we really depend on state municipal leadership, because without safe roads, without safe sidewalks, we can't hold school. And that was the reality that we were in last week, and I'm hoping that we'll be in a much better place uh, going into the next event. I do want to specifically uh, recognize the, the state commissioner of transportation. Um, major applaud to him for proactively reaching out post our most recent event to figure out how can we have better lines of communication and what do we need to move forward? I appreciated that, that uh, that reach out to me, and I think it'll go a long way when we talk about our state roads. And then uh, I think on a different note, I just want to say time is flying, and our second CCL community convening is around the corner on December sixth, and planning for the academies of Anchorage are well underway. And with all of that said, uh, thank you, everyone, enjoy your holidays, stay safe out there. Um, yeah, it's cold out there.
Thank you very much. Uh, questions for the superintendent?
I think that uh, it was a challenging week for many of us. The parents and, and students and staff at O'Malley Elementary School were taken aback um, by being the only school to remain shuttered um, an additional day. There was reporting that there was a misunderstanding, miscommunication um, about maintenance of the road. What is ASD's understanding about what will be different moving forward with maintaining, I think it's Rock Ridge Drive?
Sure, and I may ask Mr. Anderson to add some color to it, but essentially um, that road is um, maintained by a board of volunteers, it's separate from municipal plowing. The issue is that particular road is pretty far away from the jurisdiction of that volunteer board, and there was some misunderstanding as to what are the mechanisms to say it no longer makes sense for this board to be responsible for that particular road. They thought they could email the municipality and ASD and it would be done, it would actually take the voters to decide whether or not uh, that group will maintain that road or not. Uh, Mr. Anderson, feel free to correct anything. All right, that, that's the situation, so um, in the short term, we reached out to the municipality and that group, and they actually both sent graders, which was not efficient, but they were both acting with urgency to clear the road so we can get back to school. But now the conversation has been brought forth to everyone, so we know that that group is responsible for that road until we bring it to the voters and we give it back to the municipality or whatever will happen, or the state, I forget which one.
And member Lessons, that is an item on our joint agenda for the uh, December eighth.
But I guess just thank you for that report, so I guess I just want to clarify for what I think I heard is that for the remainder of this year, before any item can go before voters, the upper O'Malley Lursa will maintain responsibility for the Rock Ridge Drive.
Correct, the Lursa is responsible until they go through the formal mechanism, they can't do an email, they can't request it, it needs to go to the voters, great question.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, uh, member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, I know this wasn't, won't be a complete surprise to Dr. Branks, I promised him I would bring it up. I think we've all heard from parents who expressed appreciation for the remote learning option, but a desire to make it as impactful as possible. Um, and what I'll add personally is infrequent as possible, given functioning municipal infrastructure. But still, with that said, I, I think that we still have some work we can do to make remote learning more functional and engaging um, for students, as well as a, a more consistent product delivered across all campuses. Can you speak to if you agree with that sentiment, I guess first of all, and second of all, what we can do, what we may already be doing as a district to evaluate what days, which I know wasn't intentionally planned and we didn't ask for, um, and how parents can engage in that process and provide feedback for the district to consider?
Sure, one, we continue to welcome that feedback from families, we receive quite a bit, but lines of communication are open when it comes to understanding what can we do to, to make this type of a situation more bearable? I will say, the breakdown with remote learning in this event was frankly, this weather event lasted a little too long. Um, we've had remote learning on days when it's not actively snowing, and we need to really hammer down our mechanisms to clear snow from sidewalks and roads, and that's going to take a unified effort, and ASD wants to be a part of the solution. I, I can't speak for the municipality and state, whether that will be more people, more equipment, but I will say that something has to change. We can't go through this a third winter in a row, and I think when remote learning has to take place for a week or more, it becomes really challenging. So I'm with you, member Jacobs, I hope that in the future, our weather events are infrequent, and when they do occur, they're short and brief, because remote learning as designed was intended from when school shuts down, let's say on Monday, it's kind of keeping that momentum, that continuity going, so perhaps by Wednesday, Thursday, we're back. Um, we didn't have that opportunity, and of course, we did have the holiday, which made it a little bit more complicated. But with that said, I wouldn't, I won't be recommending that staff determine a path to make remote learning engaging, should there be a four-week weather event, because I hope there are not four-week long weather events, honestly, I hope they're no longer than four days, but I, I will stand by the decisions that were made to keep the schools closed. I think there's a really good conversation brewing about, should it be a snow day, should it be a remote day, should it be a remote day where, you know, the activities are more engaging, or we have a standard of teacher-student interaction, those are great, and those are the actual conversations that we're entertaining, because we can do more. Our, our teachers are working incredibly hard, I know on remote learning day, number two and three, they're reaching out to students, understanding, okay, like, what can we do to accelerate learning if you perhaps, you know, used your entire packet? Those were the things happening on the teacher level, so what I've asked the team to do is to think about, how do we take pockets of excellence from our exemplar remote educators and spread that? Uh, and in this uh, series of conversations, we've gathered some good practices that we need to take to the next level.
Thank you, member Higgins?
I'll just add that, you know, if you, if you follow the global, the, the climate change, um, the forecast up here is milder, wetter winters, and the same with the summers. And so if we think this is an exceptional year, I think this is a bad decision. People know that this type of change is coming. Um, I grew up in New Orleans area, and ninety degree was high, and I got down there and I had a heat index of one hundred and twelve. Uh, you know, twenty years later, it's, it, the, the climate is changing, and this is not an unforeseen emergency, and it's not something we're not going to see anymore. So whatever we do for the remote learning, emphasis on learning, we need to recognize that it's going to be more significant, I think, in the future, I think we're going to see some this.
I, I do think that, I've, I've been here fifty years, I've never seen um, weather quite like this so, as often as we've had it. Um, and it's not just the snowfall, I mean, that's one thing, but it's maneuvering and navigating the snowfall, whether you, uh, you know, whether you're a student or an adult, it's just, you know, how do we draw the, I don't know, so I join you, member Higgins, and uh, you know, congratulating, not even congratulating, but commending this, the superintendent and his team for making the tough call. We are um, taking all of the input very seriously. Uh, we know that it's not possible to please everybody all the time. Um, but, but at least in my mind, speaking only for myself, if, safety is very important, and if I err, I will err on, on the side of safety every single time, but I do think there are some things, and we've gotten great feedback, there are some things that can guide us in how we, how we um, prepare uh, our students a, a, and our teachers to, to do the remote learning, if that is what the community wants. Um, or we figure out how to just do snow days and make them up, and you'd only have, I mean, if that means making them up during spring break, making them up at the end of the year, um, that is another conversation, but um, yeah, I, I, I just don't quite, I've never seen anything quite like um, last year and this year, and this year, it's a whole month earlier, we didn't get anything like this in last year until December, so I, I, again, tough call, um, but I for one appreciate um, the attention to safety. Uh, anybody else comment, member Donley?
Yeah, I had two questions. First of all, what are the district's articulated standards for the minute, minimum academic content for a course to be delivered on a, on a, on a, on one of these days that we uh, the non-direct learning days, or remote learning days?
Two questions?
That's one.
Oh, just one, okay.
He's got another, that's a first.
Okay, so by minimum academic standards, in terms of how much learning can happen before you decide to do remote or not remote?
Yeah, to, no, well, to put it in the context, I've had a lot of parents complain that the, the course, courses were severely lacking in content, academic content, what was being presented during the remote learning days.
Standard.
And I was wondering, do we have a standard for the minimum amount of academic content that should be delivered, you know, remotely?
I think one of the challenges is that there's a lot of variance when we talk about by course, we're, we're talking about dozens and dozens of courses, and I would say an additional challenge that is also very fair would be the quality of a secondary remote experience versus an elementary remote experience. I think that there's some great feedback that remote is more challenging for our elementary families than for our secondary families. So um, there isn't a rubric that we apply on the day of snow days where we look at the objectives on the class level and decide, there's enough objectives that could be delivered on this day to a percentage, and therefore it's remote versus snow day. So that's not the calculus there, but I think you underscore exactly the, the reason why. We need to figure out, when we do go remote, how can I at the teacher level ensure that I understand what my remote learning lesson will be when it's in the context of a student with, let's say, a laptop and access to their teacher via Zoom? I think that needs to be the quality of standard when a teacher develops a snow day or remote learning day lesson plan. And I think our educators by and large are attempting to do it, and now that we've had five additional data points of snow days, we're hearing maybe that wasn't quite the bar that parents are expecting, and we hear that. So again, we want to invite this feedback, if there are particular courses that are challenging to do via remote learning, if it's an elementary versus secondary divide, if it's a grade level divide, that's what we want to understand, because it's certainly not our intent to intentionally pivot to remote learning when we think that an academic standard is not met. It truly is meant to provide continuity of learning and an expectation for our staff that it's not a, a free day, we're, we're working, we're trying to educate kids, and certainly for our students, the expectation is there is some semblance of learning going on, it's a different modality. So I think member Donley is raising fantastic points that really should charge our continuous improvement to make remote learning better. I wish I could answer that more precisely, but it's a very, it's a very big question. That was number one, but what's number two?
I'll, I'll pass that. That's big enough.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? Yes, member Lessons?
Maybe it's not a question, maybe it's just an opportunity to reflect um, the challenges that I saw in, in my house about remote learning, um, really related from, I mean, when the power goes out or the internet goes out, it doesn't go out across the entire city, right? It's very spotty, it can interrupt the teachers' connectivity while they're trying to offer a Zoom, it can off, it can interrupt the students' connectivity while they're trying to log in or engage in that program online. So I think by and large, the secondary work was successful, but relying on functioning power, when we know that there are, I don't know, really strong winds and heavy snow lines, uh, or heavy, you know, heavy lines and tree branches covered in snow, I think is a challenge for a remote learning day. And the pa- the packet seemed to work reasonably well on day one, but then we didn't have enough. Um, so there are paths forward, and I will be eager to, you know, hear what your, your teams come up with, or what are the, what are the ideas of excellence? Just wanted to share that personal experience, appreciate that.
So I, I just want to take a minute to share um, a, uh, information from a, a teacher on how So I, I just want to take a minute to share a, information from a, a teacher on how, on, that's a whole different perspective. And I'm reading from a, written from something that the teacher wrote. "I was up at six AM, safe and happy, preparing communications and opportunities for students. As a parent, I was contacted by my own children's principal and teachers, elementary and high school, regarding expectations for the day. I expressed kindness, grace, understanding and a, and a window in which to meet expectations that was exceedingly reasonable. The clear message was that they were there and available to support learning as best they could, as best as students were able. As a teacher, historically, we have been told that snow days are regular workdays, but are left without much to do other than catch up on grading, which is always welcomed. Remote learning is a shift." She, she goes on to share, "It was time well spent. I was able to connect with over seventy-five families in one way or another and exchange messages with over thirty students. Every interaction was positive and involved mutual well wishes for health and safety. Some were sharing funny photos of pets in the snow over their heads. Some were just saying hi and let me know that they, that, that they had everything they needed. Others were sharing specific challenges and we had prob, that we had problems solved. Others wanted clarification and we problem solved. Others wanted, uh, uh, on the expectations. They wanted clarifications on the expectation." Anyway, and I'm not going to read it all, but I appreciate it getting this because when we look at what that means in, to shift, you know, you, this, the teacher perspective, the parent perspective, the access to kids, not every, I'm sure not every one of his teacher's kids logged on or, or contacted her, but if they chose to, she was there. Not just for her students, but with the staff that was responsible for her own kids. So it is a complex yet dynamic thing that we've created. And I just, I, I, I think that if we, I don't know that it's possible to equate what happens on a remote day to what actually happens in the, when kids are in class with the teacher for, for, for six hours or however many hours. But I do think it's possible to have meaningful communication, relationship building. And, and, and that can't, that means something. At least it means something to me. So if anybody is interested in reading the entire message from this teacher, because it really is, it's just a, you know, it, it doesn't look like a regular school day, but yet it is a regular school day and these are the, the ways that, and I know it's not the only teacher doing this, but it's the only one that I, that shared with me. So with, that's the end of my comments on that. So again, I will err on the side of safety every single time. Member Wilson?
I, I just wanted to add thank you to the counselors as well because my personal experience with our kids was the counselors were reaching out as well. So it was, it was literally all staff that were trying to reach out to students.
Yeah. Okay, that moves us to board member comments. Who wants to go first? Josh, you want to go first? Kick us off tonight.
Short comments. On like a snow day, as a student, I'm only talking about my experience, not as all the students. I wanted to coin in that a lot of the people around my school seem to coin in like Dr. Brian mentioned, variance in the learning. So some teachers gave us like an announcement and one assignment or some just said, have a good snow day. But the fact of the matter is that finals are still going to happen and that stress is building and we're not getting the content required. And it's just kind of concerning and I don't know how we will make up for that, whether that be in the spring. And I think that with that variance, we need to maybe firm some orders in terms of curriculum or else we don't do it at all. I don't know what the solution there is, but I did enjoy my snow days. Go get that. There's also some talks about like the recent domestic violence in the news. Our, our school was talking about that and how Breeze Law and education regarding, starting young about, well, Breeze Law is about consent, but there's all those issues surrounding interactions and positive relationships that weren't there when you're younger on, on older generations and now they are. And it is scary to believe that Alaska has very alarming, high, alarmingly high rates of domestic violence. And that is just an issue that is related to mental health, but it's not really well talked about. And I appreciate that we are doing Breeze Law, but perhaps there could be more done.
Thank you very much, Joshua. We'll go on to, you just keep going around. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that if there was a way to capture eighty percent of the cost of interview replacement from a non-tax funding source, a local tax funding source that could not be used to help address our projected massive deficit, I, I would support replacement over a remodel also. But I don't think that's a fair comparison. We didn't, we were not presented with that scenario. I wish we were because I'd love to capture eighty percent matching funds on, on any projects we've got. I do predict that sometime in the future, just based on a constitutional situation, I don't know how long the state can continue not to fund urban districts while continuing to build schools other places. There's a real legitimate constitutional question there. So in answer to Member Lessons' really important question of what do we see in the future? I can't, you know, the, the moratorium on the bond debt reimbursement was to address a specific emergency in state funding situation, incredibly low oil prices. And if that emergency doesn't exist, I don't know what the justification for eliminating bond debt retirement is for urban areas while continuing to one hundred percent fund school construction in other parts of the state. So I do think that at some point that's going to have to work itself out. And then if money becomes, you know, if, then we'd have the ability to capture funds with, with a significant matching fund and that's going to reduce the cost to anchoring to property taxpayers for these kinds of maintenance, major maintenance and remodeling projects.
Thank you, Member Donley. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I will be brief. Just wanted to thank Dr. Brian, the administration for their leadership over the last two weeks. There were some really tough calls there and I appreciate student safety first and not apologizing for it. Also wanted to thank the educators, counselor, support staff who made remote learning possible. It was a situation that we didn't ask for and still our, our educators came through, so kudos to them. I also wanted to express appreciation for our board joining in support to rights municipal leadership and, and support functioning, snow removal and plowing in our municipality. I did some digging after the, the cancellations had to occur and was struck to find that despite lane miles increasing in our municipality by thirty or more percent in the last two, two and a half decades, we have effectively shrunk our municipal snow plowing operations. And it's, it's no small wonder that it's the, the originally what turned into a, was once a forty-eight hour turnaround, spiraled into a seventy-two, then eighty-four, then ninety-four hour response time. And so we were talking earlier about, you know, how affordable housing and how food insecurity impacts the, this, the student group of, that are economically disadvantaged. It's all those other things that impact learning. And so, yeah, so just highlighted more areas of focus and potential advocacy for me. So, yeah, leave that there. And lastly, wanted to continue to express appreciation for our board for putting the importance of supporting our students, families and staff first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Higgins?
I'll start by just saying that the speakers tonight, it was very civil, we had differences of good things, but I appreciate the way that it's being handled and the way the speakers presented themselves. In regards to the weather, I'm going to have to respond to President Bellamy's comments about the history of this. When I came up here in eighty-three, in eighty-two, in September, they had a snowfall and they were shocked that the sn, the snow set, stopped. And then in early, in March, it was all gone.
That's because you were fresh out of Louisiana. You were fresh out of Louisiana, everything.
Eighty-four, eighty-three, they had a contest to see who could predict the first measurable snowfall. And after the first year, it still had not come out with a winner. So it varies a lot. In, 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 I think it was eighty-nine, we had minus forty-five degree temperature. And in two thousand and three, we had six thou, six feet of snow at my house that day. It was unreal doing it. But this year, what's different is we had a wet spring snow with the very beginning. So that's where it's at. And the last bit I'll say is that I always joke that the school board has a three-minute talking rule and they call it the Pat Higgins Rule. I would say, uh, uh, Member Donley's competing, but thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Let's go with Andy, a member Holloman. Did you have closing comments?
I'll, I'll keep them brief so that Amanda doesn't punish me. I, I do want to say that when things like this happen, every bit of progress we make comes down to our staff and the schools. And after the administration does everything it can, that's where it falls. And I think people are trying hard. I do think the point about remote learning being very different from a snow day, which was a workday if you were on staff and not if you were a student, is well worth remembering. It just seems like the past three years, we keep getting a series of curveballs that are very difficult to deal with. Still doing what we can, obviously not doing the, the optimum performance that we had prior. I think the public's kind of adjusting to that and understanding and, and it's appreciated. But ultimately, the, the flat funding, lack of adjustment for inflation is hobbling us. It will make things worse, just like it's made snow removal worse. We're really going to have to change that part of it. I, I hope this coming year is a turnaround. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Holloman. Okay, Member Wilson? Oh, did you, oh, oh, that way. Okay, go on. She don't want to be last today.
I wanted to say that it was wonderful to connect with other board members at the Alaska Association of School Board meeting a week and a half ago after I shoveled out my driveway. It took me two and a half days, but I did it. It was humbling to hear from students directly. Really quite disheartening to hear about the magnitude of challenges that our peers are facing. I guess misery loves company. But one of the things that I'm proud of from that weekend is the consensus that the organization is going to be advocating for a very substantial increase to the ba, base student allocation. And, you know, one of the sort of the technical questions was, well, did we talk about, you know, local rates of inflation in Alaska? Do we talk about rates of inflation nationwide? And I think the reality lots of board members concurred was that, you know, you're buying curriculum, you're buying paper, you're buying steel, you're competing for teachers on a national stage. And with that in mind, the Alaska Association of School Boards agreed to advocate for, for a base student allocation increase of no less than one thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is like sixteen twenty-five is, reflects inflation since July first, twenty sixteen. And then there's like a thirty dollar increase to improve the implementation of the Alaska rate gap. So the magnitude of our need, and Member Donley, you spoke about this powerfully earlier tonight, the mag, it is so substantial. It is hard to wrap your mind around. I've been sharing with community councils that, as we heard in a prior meeting, you know, our options are going to be to spend our fund balance down to eight percent or down to five percent if a super majority of the board agrees. And that's going to leave us with something like a forty-one to sixty-eight million dollar structural deficit. That's the magnitude of forty-one to sixty million dollars that we have to figure out where we cut it from. I just think it underscores the extent to which education has not been maintained in the state of Alaska. And I use the word maintain very specifically because that is what is spelled out in the state constitution. That education shall be maintained. And it's not a question of if parents come to say, well, my program, my, my, my extracurricular, my class size, these things are all important to me. We're going to hear that all, but, but we're going to be dealing with the cards that we have received and we have to pass a balanced budget in February. And it is incumbent upon all of us to advocate that the legislature maintains education as is their responsibility.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Wilson?
Last but not least, I just wanted to mention one other group, oh, actually a couple other groups of folks. As far as thank yous, the BPOs and maintenance first, making sure that the sidewalks were clear, the parking lots were clear. Huge amounts of work there. So thank you to those, those groups of folks. Also love to hear about APU's partnership with the CDC and providing swimming, a swimming program to so many of our students. So I, I love to hear about all the partnerships and what they're doing. So thank you to everybody who, who came out to testify tonight. I just like to highlight our partnerships because that's, that's awesome work that our community is doing with our students. And also our communications report, we have, ASD has launched a new reading for life messaging today with direct messaging to families. And there's more to come next week with new videos. And speaking of videos, we will have our next chapter in the Attendance Matters messaging, which we've talked about quite a bit this evening, the project starting next month. If you haven't checked out our social media, you should. We have new videos, ASD has new videos from the Weather Lab series and shout out to Diamond High School participating in that. In addition, there is lots of information peppered in videos about how to keep schools clear from snow and have been highlighting the Alaska Native Heritage Month, so, which is awesome. Lots of great things being done in our schools within recognition for that. And check out some cool content when you can. And our next communications committee meeting is in two weeks on Thursday, December seventh at, what time did we?
You're going to be at your regular time.
It's at one PM. Okay. Wasn't sure if we were changing those.
Member Lessons, unless we think we need ten minutes in between, but we can talk about that.
Okay, so right now we're, we're still at one o'clock then?
We're still at one o'clock now, but we might need a little transition. Like Member Holloman gave himself like thirty minutes. So, yeah, he's going to start at ten thirty so that he can be done.
So governance will start at ten thirty then, correct?
Okay, and I, so, okay.
So for, for December seventh?
It seems like having the meetings on, on the same day, the committee meetings on the same day is an excellent idea. We just need space in between.
Okay.
To transition. So we will.
So for December seventh, just for clarification, I know then communications is starting at one-ish, but the other two meetings that day are starting at eleven and twelve still?
Yes.
Ish? Okay, we'll go with the ishs.
We'll, we'll define the ish later.
And happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. Okay, so I only have a couple of thank yous and a few, I guess, just information pieces. I wanted, I really want to thank Stephen Brown for, for doing a sectional at the AASB conference. And I want to thank board members that showed, Joshua, of course, was there. Let's see, you know, Member Lessons, Member Holloman, Member Jacobs and Member Higgins. Most of them were there for the whole snow day, the whole snow in. But I do thank you. I thank you very all very, very much. And I think Kathy Moffett stopped by, the superintendent stopped by. It was, it was really, it was, it was really a great meeting, and we had some really good discussion. The Iser, the UAA Iser Forum is going to be on December 8th. Is it the 7th? I'll send it to you. I can't remember. I think it is the 7th, though. Yeah, it's a forum on the 7th, there's a reception. And I think, I think it's Mr. Picas is going to be at that. So I want to, I did tell Diane that I would share that with the board and with the administration, that event. So I think I sent it. I can't remember. Yes? On the, on the 7th. This one is on the 7th. I misspoke earlier. It's on the 7th.
There's, there's an evening on the 7th, at 5:30, there's a reception. I think that the
The panel starts at 7.
Discussion is at 7:00 PM. And then on Friday, the 8th, there is, I think, a full day with the AASB Law and Policy Day. And Mr. Picas will be maybe a part of that. But we also have other events that day.
Yeah. And our luncheon on the 8th. So we won't be able to do, we won't be able to do that Friday, but so that Thursday night is probably going to be to listen to the panel discussion. And maybe if you can attend the reception, that would be great. But I will get that out to you. I think I forwarded it, but I'll go look again and make sure because I wanted to make sure I shared that with everybody. We got a notice from AASB that there are two seats. They're one-year seats from now until July, if anyone is interested in applying. And the other information point is that we are, we had to reschedule our goal planning, and that, the new date in time for that is 12:14. Is it 2:00 to 4:00 or 3:00 to 5:00? I can't remember. Yeah. I, I'm going to say, I think we had 3:00 to 5:00 PM. We'll get all of this to you in a, in a little, in an email so you can have it. With that, that concludes all board member comments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved and second to adjourn. Any objection to the, to adjourning? Seeing, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys, for your time, your wisdom and your service.
Recording.